Mr. Moore, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Valentine. The order was determined by drawing, literally pieces of paper out of a hat with numbers on them. The questions will be asked in a rotating order directly to one candidate. He will have two minutes to respond. Beginning with two members of the opposing party, all three remaining candidates will have one minute to rebut or respond to the same questions. As we get toward the end of our time period, I will invite the candidates to close with a two-minute statement in the following order, which if you are observant, you will note is just the opposite of the starting order. Mr. Valentine, Mr. Smith, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Batari. And with that, it is 7:30, and we're going to begin the Our Town Candidate Night. I'm Art Aldrich. I'm the editor, founder, editor, and publisher of Our Town, and have been so since 1973, when the paper started. We began the candidate's night, it became a tradition in 1975, and have done it every two years ever since. So, let's begin with the opening statement from Mr. Batari.
Right here. Thank you, Art, and thank you to the Our Town for putting this on. I'd like to thank all of you in the audience for being here tonight, and those who are watching your TVs at home. It's important for people to take active roles in selecting their elected officials, and I'm here to humbly ask you for your vote tonight. Before we start, I'd like to just give you a little bit of my professional background. I started off as a teacher in the New York City Board of Education, coming up to Orange Town here in September 22 of '79, and becoming a patrolman, joining the Orange Town Police Department. I served on the Orange Town Police Department as a patrolman, then starting the DARE program and the first DARE officer. For those of you not familiar with DARE, it's Drug Abuse Resistance Education. I then was assigned to the Juvenile Aid Bureau, and I was the first SRO, which is School Resource Officer. Soon after that, I was promoted to sergeant, and myself with two other police officers that were wonderful, worked nights in Nyack. We worked every weekend from eight at night to four in the morning. Did not make my wife happy, but it was a wonderful experience. I wouldn't trade it for the world. I retired February of this year, and it just seemed like a natural progression. I served for 35 and a half years, the town of Orange Town, and I am looking to give back to the community. It gave me and my wife, my family, a wonderful life. Going back to my family. I'm married, three children, my wife Teresa, two children still live at home, Christopher and Caitlin. Jerry is married and bought a house in Bloavelt, and his wife Kate and daughter Adeline, which is a wonderful addition to our family. I'd like to address the taxes, to keep taxes and to keep things affordable for our children and our streets safe. Okay? Also to ensure the health of our citizens, okay, by stopping development such as an Elatech. Okay? We need to look at our zoning laws, and we need to change and make sure that something does not happen again. This is something that is dear to me, because my son Christopher, at the age of five years old, was diagnosed with ALL, childhood leukemia. Okay? It's probably the worst thing that can happen to a parent, and it was the worst 39 months of my life. So, with that, I will close. I saw my red sign. And again, thank you all for coming, and I look forward to serving you.
Okay. Next up, we have incumbent council member Tom Moore.
Good evening. I also like to thank the Our Town, Art Aldrich, who always does a professional job at these candidate's nights debates. I've been through a couple. And thank you for all the people that are here quite a bit. And over the last four years, I've also noticed from talking with people how many watch our town board meetings on TV. It's really good, because I get some good questions, which brings me to why I'm doing this again. I look around, I see family and friends and neighbors, I see people that come to our meetings and ask good questions. And it's a difficult job, town council, but it's also very rewarding. Last four years has been several difficult decisions to make, and we, as a town board, go through those decisions very closely. I have to say that my background, I think, suits me well for being up here. I'm a lifetime accounting and budgeting professional, CPA, masters in finance, and these tools and education and just on-the-job training, as well as interfacing with the community in all aspects that I have, helps me deal with the new things that come up. We tend to look at what we have in front of us, which is what we have to deal with now. But in this evolving world, there's always new things coming up, and we have to look at what experience, what training, what education the town board members have to deal with things we haven't seen yet. Along that way, I've also been a member of a school board for six years. I've coached youth recreation, I've helped run programs, I've taught religious education, I lecture at my church. Well-rounded, very involved in the community. And it's why I want to continue this, just looking at all the faces here. There's still more to be done, as we all know. Talking about community involvement, my daughter actually coached Jerry's daughter in the basketball program. So it's a very close-knit town we have. We're always running into each other. Jerry brought up town code. I was going to speak about this later, and we'll probably get into it in more detail. But we do have to work on the town code, and the town board is very close. By the end of the year, we'll be adjusting the town code for biohazards, as well as other things. It is an important thing. From the site he mentioned, I live about two miles from him. And as he does, I have a wife, I have two daughters, which I'm concerned with. So I'll be asking tonight, and hopefully I'll make the case, to keep me here for one more term, and work for you as I've always tried to do. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Mr. Smith.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Our Town. I want to thank...
Yeah, much better.
I want to thank everyone for coming and everyone watching on TV. My name is Chris Smith. I live in Pearl River. For the last few years, I've lived in Rockland County for over 10 years now. I recently got married, and I'm about to purchase a home in Spark Hill. And I want to raise my family here, and that's why I sit up here today. I look and see out to the crowd with all these people, and I'm glad that everyone's come out and is participating in government, because that's what it's all about. We have a proud history here in Orange Town, and I want to continue that history by sitting on this board. I work for Verizon currently. I also have an advertising, marketing, and PR firm, which I've had since 2006. I've also worked in government on different levels. I worked for Rockland County for three years, and I worked for the State Assembly for about four years. So I have governmental experience, I have business experience, and I have experience in corporate America. So I think my background fits well, sitting up here. There are many issues that we're all going to discuss tonight. Obviously, we're not going to agree on everything, although many of us up here do agree that we're Mets fans, and we're glad to see that they're actually winning nowadays. So, you know, over the last few years, I've been watching the town board, and I equate it to what's going on down in DC, right? So we have a Democratic town supervisor and four Republican members, but they don't work with him. They've worked with him on one issue or two issues, but that's it. We see the same thing in DC. You know, we have a Democratic president, we've got a Republican Congress. It's about people, not politics. It should not be Republican, Democrat, independent, whatever you registered as. We should all work together, because this is a community, and we need people who are going to work hard and be leaders, and not be followers. So I humbly ask for your support, and thank you very much.
Oh, oh. Maybe we can have someone turn that PA system down. We're getting terrible reverberation and booming. Next, we'll be getting feedback. Okay? It'll be very distracting. Okay. Next, we're going to hear from Paul Valentine.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to the Our Town and for all the people who came out. I think this is such an important night, because you actually get to hear from the candidates and see them physically and what their point of views are. Why am I running for office, and who is Paul Valentine? I'm running for office because I feel like I'm part of the history of this town. I moved up here 26 years ago to raise my family with my wife. 23 years ago, I started my own small business in the basement of my house, Valentine Electric. Due to the grace of this community, my business has flourished. I now have 18 full-time employees. My business expertise is something that I bring to the forefront of being on this town council. When I was a young boy, I was taught by my family how to dedicate your life to the service of others. My father was a Marine Corps pilot in World War II, my mom was in the waves. My grandfather was in merchant Marines in World War I and II. My uncle did five major landings. My brother was in the Navy, and I was in the Marines. At that time, I dedicated my life to service of others. While running my business, I also dedicated my life to serving my community. I served as a coach for Orange Town Mighty Midgets, South Orange Town Little League, St. Catherine CYO, Clarkstown Travel, to name a few. I was a past president of Bloavelt Lions Club. While my tenure as president, we were able to build a park in the middle of Bloavelt at no cost to the taxpayers. My wife and I donated the lion, and we donated all of the electrical work. My business donates to the community also, due to the fact that the community has supported us. We've donated scoreboards to Tappan Zee High School Football, to Tappan Zee High School Softball, to Veterans Park, to name a few. We donate scholarships every year. I've been living the American dream, and I want to get back to my community, and I do so. My small business expertise brings a different perspective to the town, and I've been working diligently to keep the taxes lower. Part of the reason the last four years, your taxes have been under the 2% cap, is because I've been on the board. I stand up and I fight for the people of this town. My children and myself, my son lives a block from the Rockland Psychiatric Center, I live a block from there, my daughter lives two blocks with my new grandson, my son lives a block from the Pfizer campers. I care about the development. I'm here to make sure that the development is done properly and that we remain safe. Thank you, and please support me on November 3rd.
Okay. It is now time to ask questions directly to the candidates, and again, this is the protocol. We will ask in rotating order directly to one candidate, who will have two minutes to respond. Then we're going to go to the members of the opposite party, who will have one minute to respond to the same question, and then the fourth person will be the member of the same party. And if I can keep that straight, we're doing great. Okay? Okay. So, we started with Jerry Batari, so now we're going to start with Paul Valentine, and here is the question. What do you see as the most important challenge facing Orange Town today?
Well, that's a tough question, because there are a lot of important challenges facing Orange Town. One is the development of the two large pieces of property that we have that are left undeveloped. Because if high-density housing gets in there, it will change the face of Orange Town. If the wrong type of commercial development get in there, it will jeopardize the safety of our residents. Being conservative on the development, I think it's very important that we take a slow approach, and we make sure that these are developed properly. Well, we've been working diligently at the RPC site. It feels like in the last four years, nothing has happened, but government moves slow, and as soon as you involve the state, it moves even slower. But a lot has happened. And more importantly than that, the wrong type of development was not allowed to happen. So I think that's very, very important. The next thing is, we have a couple of large contracts coming up, the PBA contract, the CSEA contract. I was able to work with both of those on the last contract, and we were able to settle them in the best interests of the town and the workers of the town, who are great workers. And even doing that, I got the endorsement of the Orange Town PBA, the Rockland PBA, the New York City PBA, the Central Labor Council. I'm a non-union contractor, and I got the endorsement of the Hudson Valley Central Labor Council and the Rockland County Labor Council because of my efforts on part of the town and the development of the town.
Okay. Chris, Chris Smith, you have one minute to respond to the same question.
Yes, so I agree with Paul that RPC is definitely one of the bigger issues in the development. Obviously, I believe we all agree that high-density housing would be the worst thing to ever happen to Orange Town. We see what's going on in Ramapo, we see what's going on in parts of Havestra. Obviously, we don't want that to happen here. I think the budget is one of the biggest issues and challenges. We have a ton of unfunded mandates that are brought down to us from the state and the county, pension costs, insurance costs, healthcare, things of that nature. I think we've had, over the last few years, close to almost a 10% spike in these unfunded mandates. The county turned around and took away Rockland Community Chargebacks for Rockland Community College, which was a hit to our budget. So I think we need to look closely. As Paul said, we have these contracts coming up. I've been endorsed by the CSEA, I've been endorsed by the Hudson Valley Labor Council, and IBEW, and the Rockland County Labor Council. So I've worked together with these groups in the past, and I will look forward to working together with them in the future.
Okay. Following our established protocol, we are now going to ask the same question of Jerry Batari. The most important challenges facing Orange Town today?
I would have to agree. I think that Rockland State is certainly one of the challenges that face the board, and I also agree that we move slowly on it. But 15 years? 15 years ago, we purchased this property. You know, it just slowly is one thing, cautiously is one thing. 15 years is a long time, right? This has to be moved, it has to move a little bit quicker than it's moving. There's a lot of ratables that can go in there, clean ratables, and this would bring our taxes up, or, excuse me, our income up, income tax, whatever it is. But again, I just think it's there. I too have the support of all the police agencies, which I'm pretty sure you would expect, but the CSEA as well. So thank you very much.
Okay. And the last word on this question goes to Tom Moore.
Yes, on the RPC, it's really a three-part, sorry, a three-part development issue. RPC is key, and it's all been spoken about. There's not too much more to add, but I also agree that we're not going to do any high-density housing in there at all. The other piece of property that we don't own, that we have to negotiate properly in terms of allowable zoning, is what Pfizer plans on doing with their property. It's key that we put, that we allow them to put only the right thing in there, but at the same time, allow the Nannuit School District to raise the taxes they need. Their taxes have gone up, their property taxes have gone up $1,000 a year for the last two years, and they need to educate their children. So it's a serious balancing act, and I'm looking forward to doing it. The other thing, I'll make a pledge, I've done this before, the other part of development, I will never vote for downzoning a property, never. And that's key to the quality of life in this town.
Okay. Our next question, and this is going to be, we're going to start with Chris Smith on this question. What is your position on outsourcing Blue Hill Golf Course maintenance?
Well, what an interesting topic, which is, it's important. It really is, because it's an important piece of our budget. I, let me start with saying, I, we haven't seen the numbers, right? So RFPs have come in, people have made presentations, but what is the actual cost savings? Look, I don't want to see anybody laid off. Some of these people have worked for the town for over 25 years. They're going to turn around and get pushed to the Sewer Department or to a new job? I just don't, in my opinion, I don't want to see that happen to anybody. But I want to see the numbers, right? Obviously, there are losses there, you know, the bonding's coming due soon, there are interest payments, there's a bunch of different things going on over there, but I need to see the numbers, which we haven't seen as of yet. I wish we would see them before Election Day, that would be great, so that I can take an honest look at these numbers and see what's going on. What are the bids? You know, is it, you know, we have applied golf, we've got AJ and Brett, so these numbers haven't come out. So I can't give you an honest opinion without knowing all the information, but I will tell you that if I get elected and I'm allowed to vote for it, there will not be one layoff of one town employee. Thank you.
Okay. Tom Moore, you have one minute to respond to the same question on outsourcing of Blue Hill.
Admittedly, Chris is at a disadvantage, he hasn't seen the numbers. As a matter of fact, we're going through the numbers now. We met with the potential developers just last week. And here's my approach, in one minute or less. If there's a tremendous amount of savings, this much, because there's always risk in the financial savings, if there's a tremendous amount of savings, it kind of coerces us to outsource. If it's a smaller amount of savings, and now we're talking about losing our employees who have done such a great job there, and we take a risk of what the developer may do with the property over three or five years, then you start taking a second look. And I know the golf course people themselves have come in with proposals that dramatically reduce the losses for the next year or two. So that's another key part of the analysis. We can't compare it just to the huge number that you had lost in previous years. They have a proposal for next year to bring that loss down quite a bit.
Paul Valentine, same question, outsourcing Blue Hill.
I have seen the numbers. It appears that we could save upwards of $2 million. Right now, currently, the pro shop and the restaurant are already outsourced. So there is a practice in the town of that. Nobody wants to see anybody lose their job. And through attrition and jobs that haven't been filled over this year, it looks like all of the workers will find a place to land, and nobody will lose their job. They may be working in a different position, but due to the bumping rights of the CSEA, it seems like the majority, if not all of the existing members, will find a new place to work within the town. So nobody will be losing their job. And we do keep local control, the town board would still be in charge of the golf course, and all of the residents would still have their rights that they currently have to their tee times and everything else. So it's a financial matter. $2 million is a lot of money.
And Jerry Batari, you get the last word on outsourcing.
Thank you. Again, unfortunately, I'm going to sit with Chris on this, because I, we have not seen the numbers. We've talked about it, we have not seen the numbers. My only concern, again, is the people of the town, the wonderful workers that we've had that have worked for many years, and the course has always been a beautiful course. These are our parks. Our parks are not supposed to make money for us. We're not supposed to be losing a lot of money, but we're not supposed to make money for us. Veterans Park, our parks, other places, they're not. This is a service that the town gives to the people of the town. This is one of the reasons that we live here and want to live here, our town parks. This is one of them. So again, depending on the numbers, what they, when they come in, we'll have to look at it, but I am in favor of keeping things where they are.
Okay. And on this, on this question, next question, we're going to start with, with Tom Moore. Okay. And you'll have the, you'll have the two minutes to respond, and then we'll follow the rotation. One of the ongoing conflicts that we have noticed a lot in the paper is the soccer war, which are not being fought on the field, but fought over the fields. So the question is, how do you propose to attain or maintain resident kids' use of the town fields, and what is the quote "proper" close quote ratio of in-town to non-resident players?
First of all, one statement I've made in town board meetings several times is the angst that's been going on at the meetings quite often is not about the kids, and I keep trying, trying to bring the conversation back to the kids. Now, in terms of the details, what we're looking to do as a town board, and this goes across all youth recreation sports, not just soccer, because we're going to be fair, this is going to go across all youth sports in the town. What we're looking to do is charge surcharges to out-of-state, out-of-town, out-of-town children that participate and use our fields, that money coming to the town. And the sound theory is, right now, the out-of-towners don't pay property taxes to Orange Town. By paying additional registration fees, they would now be contributing to the town's infrastructure, number one. Number two, specifically with OMM, they're looking at taking on additional expenses from the town. They pay a large share of the maintenance cost at the soccer fields. They're looking at potentially taking over all the cost. Now, in terms of the conflict there as well, I've said at meetings, every time we have a sport, it's only broken up geographically. All sports, there's only one sport all the time. Little League, by town maybe. Lacrosse, soccer, we don't need two different leagues, because they're not split geographically. And OMM is trying to get the other program melded into there and add extra levels, which is of the, of the elite programs. So the town players that weren't top elite can now play at a lower travel league. And I'm running out of time, but, and to answer your question directly, because I always do, we're looking at going to the percentage of town residents equal to our neighboring towns, which is 65% that Clarkstown and Ramapo does, with the caveat that the out-of-towners will be paying additional fees.
All right. Jerry Batari, I'm going to kick the soccer ball to you.
I think OMM is a wonderful asset to the town. 30 years, 25 years ago, I coached with Amy. Neither one of us knew anything about soccer. Our children played. It's a, it's a great way to get children on the field. Participation is amazing. I have to agree with Tom. I says, I, I think that this is, the important thing is getting the children on the fields. Sometimes, we just have to take the parents out of it, okay? The children are the ones that are important, and they have to play. So as of now, and what I've heard here, I would have to agree with him, and I think that that would be a nice mix if it worked out and the parents can agree. Thank you.
Chris Smith.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree as well. Look, this is about the kids. People shouldn't be, parents, coaches shouldn't be fighting over who gets to use what fields. This is about the kids. That's why we have a recreation program. That's why people live here, is because of these recreation programs, and we shouldn't have people fighting over this. I would agree with the 65%, with the caveat that out-of-town residents would have to pay a special registration fee, because obviously, they're using our infrastructure. We don't get any money for it currently, and, you know, we could use it to, to hopefully increase the infrastructure, make more fields, and, and have them look great, so.
All right. Paul Valentine, last word on this question.
Okay. OMM is a huge asset to the town. I started with OMM when they were working out of the back of a store in people's cars. They made a big investment in that field, and they continue to. They put in the turf fields, and they, part of the agreement, which Tom talked about, which I was one of the leaders in negotiating... which I was one of the leaders in negotiating, was that they would pick up the rest of the maintenance, so it won't cost the town any more maintenance fees for that complex. If we agree to lower the residency requirement, that all out-of-town residents would pay a fee, which would then go back into the general fund to be used for capital improvements at the field. It's not finished yet. We have got some word from ORAC, which is a committee that was formed, and we're working with ORAC, and we didn't finalize the deal, but it seems like that's the direction we're heading.
All right, this next question is specifically directed to Jerry Batari, but all of the candidates will get a chance to weigh in on this issue of police contracts. I know it came up during our endorsement interviews repeatedly, the issue of police contracts in Orange Town. But to Jerry Batari, as a retired member of the OPD, who may be affected by the negotiations, what is going to be your level of participation when it comes to negotiating the police contracts?
I've been asked this a number of times. I've served the Orange Town Police for 35 years, I've served on their bargaining and grievance, can you hear? On my, on their bargaining grievance committees, I've gone into bargaining, and my answer is that as long as it's done professionally, okay? It has to be done professionally with a mutual respect. Says, I am no longer a member of the Orange Town Police Department. I now wear a different hat, I'm representing different people in the community, and I have a responsibility to those people in the community. So I see no reason why I could not sit down and negotiate a contract that was fair to the PBA and to the residents of Orange Town. And that's where I'll leave it.
All right, let me bounce this, let me open up the police contract question, because none of the rest of the candidates are personally affected by it. But let me bounce this to Paul Valentine, your thoughts on the police contract negotiation?
First, I know Jerry for a very long time. Our kids grew up together, he grew up down the street from me. And this isn't a shot at Jerry, or is it a partisan attack in any way? Because there's two candidates who are police officers, one in each party. The biggest part of our tax bill is the police. So to me, it would be a little scary to have two police officers negotiating the biggest part of the contract. It couldn't, away, from what I understand, affect their own retirement, which could be part of it. So what happens? Do they have to recuse themselves? If they recuse themselves, then you're leaving the biggest part of the negotiations to three people. I was able to work with the PBA, I was able to negotiate a good contract. I negotiate contracts every day of my life, big contracts. And I, in negotiating with the PBA, I gained the respect enough to get their endorsement. So they respected me as a businessman and a negotiator to make sure that they got a good deal, as well as the residents of the town. So the PBA contract's up. To me, that's an issue of concern, and it may not be. Jerry may be right, it may be something that, that they can overcome in a professional manner, but again, you're negotiating a contract with guys you worked with for 35 years. So it's just, it's an area of concern. It may not need to be, but to me, it's an area of concern.
Okay, Tom Moore, your take on police contract negotiations?
One minute or two. Whatever, that's okay. Just as a point of education, one thing a lot of people may not realize in the town is that the town board is also the police commission, which means, in addition, we do do the contract settlements, of course, and we're also the final say on all police matters, promotions, disciplines, reorganizations. The chief for police comes to us with his proposals, but we're the ultimate decision-maker. In terms of the original question, I can't read Jerry's heart and soul and mind, I've got to take him for his word, that he would do the right thing, but understand the difficulty of the question, being he was, you know, part of a colleague, a friend, which is a difficult position to be put in. Thanks.
Okay, Chris Smith.
So I've gotten to know Jerry Batari over the past few months. I didn't know Jerry before this. Listen to Jerry, his heart, his mind, his soul is in this community. And if he says he's going to do the right thing when it comes to the PBA contract, I truly believe that Jerry will do the right thing.
All right, now, my next question has to do with Anellatech, another item of great controversy in the town. And by way of background, Anellatech is proposing to build a 2,500-square-foot facility at the Pfizer plant with a three-inch vent pipe. This has been seen in many quarters as a pretext for manufacturing, or some type of grave environmental hazard. So I'm going to ask each of the council members to state, and the candidates, to state his position, and the question has two parts. One, what is your position currently on Anellatech? And two, what is your position on similar research and development facilities that might want to move to Orange Town? And I'm going to start with Chris Smith.
Well, another interesting topic that has caused a lot of back and forth amongst the community. Since the get-go of my campaign, I have been 100% against Anellatech moving in. I'm all for jobs, we need the ratables, I understand that, I get it. But this, they call it research and development, we can have an argument over whether it is manufacturing, or whatever it may be. We cannot allow us to be guinea pigs. We cannot allow us to be guinea pigs for something that's never been put in the process physically. There's all this research and studies and everything like that, that's great, that's all fine and well, but we've got people on both sides. You know, it's good for, it's good, you know, for the community, it's not going to hurt us, but then you've got people saying that it is bad for us. Look, I'd rather not find out. I want to grow, you know, I'm about to put a family together here, I'd rather not find out whether it's bad for us or not. What was the second part? I got all wound up.
How do you feel about research and development?
Look, if it's real, if it's real research and development, I'm all for it. We need, like, again, we need the ratables, we need the tax revenue, but at the same time, it's got to be clean, smart research and development.
Okay, let me, let me bounce this now to Paul Valentine.
Okay, just to clear up a few things. Chris is 100% against Anellatech. My question is, what would you have done? See, as a town board member, we never, never, never voted on Anellatech. In fact, the planning board voted on it, and it would be against the law for us to impose our will on the planning board. So I am the first one for public safety. And as the town board, we pushed in requirements that before they could ever start this little research and development facility, that there were safeguards in. There's 24-hour monitoring, there's an automatic shutdown, so we are absolutely, this will not start until those safeguards are in place, tested, and true. And I want to be, make something else clear. I am 100% opposed to the manufacturing of BTX in the town of Orange Town. Currently, there is no place that manufactures it in New York, and I don't want Orange Town to be the first one. I don't think it's possible, but I just want everybody to be clear, I'm 100% opposed to the manufacturing of BTX.
Okay, Tom.
I mean, I can almost repeat what Paul said, gave a good explanation of what the town board's position has been. Now, I too have a wife and two daughters nearby, I'm concerned with the environment, and I'm going to say so, I'm not trying to be smirky about it, I wish I lived in Yellowstone Park, I love the outdoors, I love the environment. We live in a suburb, and the effluent that some people have accused coming out of this research and development facility has been overblown, several times proven otherwise, including the size of the pipe, the vent pipe.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
Interrupted me. Not, I lost my train of thought. We actually, when we spoke about this at one meeting, we had a researcher at LaMonte Duroy, a well-renowned organization down in Palisades, come out to make sure we didn't pass a law that was going to preempt them from doing the fine research and development they're doing. And I thought that was very telling, though, when that gentleman came out, to see where this is and is research and development. Thanks.
Okay. Jerry Batari.
Okay? Yes. Anellatech, town board says that they can't do anything about it, but the town board did appoint those on the planning board, okay? So, so to hide behind something that couldn't be done, is that, it's just, in my opinion, is not the way it should be done. I will tell you that if a mistake was made, and, and, everybody makes mistakes, okay? And I'll stand in front of you and tell you that I come from a profession when you make a mistake, you admit to that mistake and you learn from it, okay? I think we need to admit our mistakes and learn from it and move on. Thank you.
Which leads me to the next question, which is a policy issue that would have to be addressed by the town board. And I'm going to, I'm going to start with, with Jerry Batari on this. How would you work to ensure that decisions from land use boards here in Orange Town follow correct guidelines? That is, how would you reverse erroneous negative declarations? Want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'll be glad to. Okay. How would you work to ensure that decisions from land use boards here in Orange Town follow correct guidelines? That is, how would you reverse erroneous negative declarations? Let's take negative, how would, how would you reverse declarations that would appear to be erroneous or have adverse consequences?
That's a very in the weeds, it's a, it's a
Then let's
Question, I would suggest a substitute, and that is, what are the criteria for land use
Appointments, appointments, very good, much better question. Okay, go ahead, talk about land use board appointments.
Criteria for land
Right, criteria
Appointments.
Okay, I'm afraid I'm at a loss here. Okay, I think, so, I'm afraid I'm at a loss, I don't understand the question, I don't know what the criteria is for the appointment of land use boards.
What would your criteria, as a, as a council, sitting council person, what would your criteria be for appointments to the land use board? Because as council people, you are part of that decision-making process.
Okay, all right. Start with the background, make sure that the people are there, find out the people. We have, most of the people that volunteer or go to our boards, all of our boards for that matter, are appointed, and they come through people that are known. There'd be an interview process, and go from there. Again, you know, this is something that I have never been involved with. I know that when we do interviews, where I come from, there are interviews, there are resumes submitted, there are interviews, and there are background checks that go through. I would be looking in that area, but I am at a loss of this question, I apologize.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to now take, take that to Tom Moore.
Sure. What we do every year when we have openings on any boards, land use or other, we advertise and we interview everybody that's interested. It's not like it was maybe 20 years ago, where everything was politically appointed, we interview everybody. I look for intelligence, love of community, common sense, big time, those three main items, ability to learn, because they're handling different things all the time. Just a quick note on what was said before, we appoint the planning board members, correct. That vote was five to two, it was split. We pick independent-minded members to these boards, otherwise we would have been seven nothing on the Anellatech, number one. And in terms of applying, the boards applying the code, they just have to follow the law. One thing that gets missed is the planning board does not make policy. All they could do is look at the town code and apply it. Thank you.
Okay. Following our rotational protocol, Paul Valentine.
Okay. When we select members for the town board, as Tom said, which we do every year when they're, they're up, I look for a conservative-minded person who's conservative on land use issues. I look for someone who has knowledge of the board, I look for someone who has the intelligence to carry through the law, and I look for someone who's part of this community, whose heart is in this community, whose family's in this community, who is like-minded to me to make sure that things are done properly. And just to get back to what Tom was saying, it sort of sounded like you should go after the land use boards if you don't agree with what they said. That's against the law. So, so you can't go because you're not happy with the decision. When they're appointed, they're an independent board, similar to a judge. Even though they work for the town, we at the town board do their budgets, we couldn't go in and tell them, change your mind on that case. And we can't do the same thing for the land use boards. They made a decision following the law.
Okay. That's the, okay, Chris Smith, you get the last word on this issue.
Sure, so, I mean, it's hard to turn around and go back and take away a decision a land use board has made, or downright illegal, probably. But if I was looking for somebody for a land use board, I'd be looking for experts, whether it's a plumber, an electrician, an architect, somebody who knows planning and zoning laws much better than I do. Obviously, an interview process and a background check. We need people. Again, like I said in my opening statement, my campaign's about people, not politics. What I've seen over and over again is on some of these boards, it's the same people who are registered to the same party being appointed, so.
Okay, everyone, tonight, every incumbent, every council candidate has given RPC as a priority. So I'm going to get very specific here, and I'm going to start with Tom Moore. What plans do you have for RPC? Or conversely, what do you see as the highest and best use for that property?
There are currently a couple of things in the works being negotiated that I really can't talk too much about on certain parcels of land. Best use, well, let's put it this way, when we put together our plan, it was things that we don't want there. We don't want high-density housing, we don't want dirty factories, we don't want development that's going to overrun the school district, causing them to need to build another building. Short of that, I'll do step two. None of us on the town board are experts in marketing and what's sellable and what's sustainable in terms of real estate. My first time on the board, and I'm not going to say because he's here, Tom Kleiner's assistant Suzanne Barclay led a wonderful job bringing in 10 legitimate proposals to develop that property. And the way it was done, we gave an outline, and these proposals came back because they could make money. Nobody's going to go there because, well, we kind of want to put this there, will you build that? No, they're not going to do that. It's got to be something sustainable and profitable for who goes in there, with the caveats that the town board, and as Paul says, we're a very conservative land use board, that nothing goes in there that's detrimental, such as the items I mentioned, Paul may come up with some others. What that leaves is low-density housing, maybe some mixed-use commercial, maybe if there's some retail that's usable in the community, it's a good front on Orangeburg Road there, to have it as a sustainable retail area. But we need to really get the word out and get more than spot selections from companies that want to go in there. Thanks.
Okay, Jerry Batari, your vision, your plan, your ideal for RPC?
I think RPC needs to be developed in a responsible way. I think RPC needs to be developed in a responsible way. There's a beautiful piece of property that I speak with Andy about a lot, and that would be down by the reservoir. It would make a wonderful parkland, something that would give us a waterfront park. Other than that, I would not like to see any religious or educational development in that area. I think we need ratables, and we need clean ratables. So my vision would be to share that a lot of that property is very developable, very much to be developed. Other property is going to cost us money to develop, the homes, the houses that are there. A lot of asbestos and a lot of other, I think that we need to balance the good land with the challenging land. And again, with good ratable development, responsible. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Smith.
So, look, that property, that property has been sitting there for a long time. Some of those buildings, as Jerry mentioned, the asbestos, it's going to cost millions to remediate all those buildings, knock them down and haul out all that contamination. Look, I'm not privy to some of these plans that Tom mentioned. I would love to see them, you know, when we get the chance. Look, I'm totally 100% against any high-density housing there. We need good, clean ratables, as Jerry said. We need to have a, a plan and a proposal, in my opinion, that should be sort of mixed use. You know, some, maybe some shopping, some apartments, things of that nature. I know there was a proposal at one point to do that. So not sure where that stands at this point. So that's what I think about RPC, and hopefully, we can get this done in the next few years because we definitely need those ratables.
Okay, Paul Valentine. Wrap up this question, please.
I think it's a great question. I've been working with a group called Reason for a number of years. I was a member of them before I got on the town board, and I've been working with them. You asked for my vision. My vision would be to put a main street in there, so that South Orange Town has a main street with some shops and mixed use. I'd like to move town hall from here and move the building department, incorporate them all in one space together with the police and the justice in a nice new building down over there. And I'd like to keep a waterfront park, which would stretch the entire length of the reservoir, a walking and jogging park where people can actually use the reservoir. When we, when they sold us on the reservoir, United Water, before then, but when that was originally built, it was supposed to be for recreational purposes. I'd like to have a little fishing pier out there, maybe some paddle boats. So I have good visions. I don't know if they could all come, but you asked for my, my vision, and that's my vision for RPC. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the point, we are nearing the end of our, the scheduled debate period, so now it is time for closing statements. And as I announced at the beginning, the order will be Paul Valentine, Chris Smith, Tom Moore, and Jerry Batari. So Paul, you're up first.
Okay.
Two minutes, please.
Two minutes. Thank you very much, everybody, for listening to me here and at home. I hope I made my case clear. I feel that I am the best person for this job. My job isn't done. I've been here four years. We were able to keep the taxes below 2%. That's only a start. There's a lot of challenges facing us. Like I said, the PBA contract, the CSCEA contract, as Chris said, with the unfunded mandates, we're able to do it, and we're going to do it again this year, and we're going to do it again for the future. It's through incentives. It's through working hard. It's through cost-effective. It's through less government. I am a guy, the only small business owner who meets a payroll. I'm the only veteran on the town board. I think it's important that you keep me here to keep the job that I started going. There is some issues facing the town. I don't take them lightly. Every issue that faces the town, I really, really work hard and do my research on. So I stand up for you to the best of my ability, and I'm hoping, come November 3rd, you'll stand up for me and vote for Paul Valentine. Give me the time to finish the job we started, and I promise you I'll finish it. And your health, safety, your tax dollars are my main concern, as they are yours. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Smith.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out and everybody who's watching at home. I want to thank our town for doing this. This is great. Obviously, you've seen there are some stark differences between myself and my opponents over the different issues in the town. We need a change on the town board. That's basically what this comes down to. Again, it's about people, not politics. I don't care what party you're registered in. If you've got a good idea, my door will always be open. I'll give you my cell phone number, my email address. You know, we need to move this town forward, and there are a lot of pressing issues. You know, I've, again, I've done small business. I've worked in government. I have many different innovative ways that we can reduce costs just by, from my work with the county and the state assembly. So I humbly ask for all of your support. I also want to thank my opponents and Jerry Batari. This has been a very enlightening discussion, and we have two weeks to go. And so the, the real fun begins after our debate, because I know a lot of you are here for the next debate. So thank you.
Okay, Tom, Tom Moore.
Sure. As somebody who became a councilman on the road of volunteerism, as I said in my opening remarks, lastly, being on the school board, which is also where I tried to control spending, it's more challenging there because it's more directly impacting the, the parents that come to the meetings. But it's a challenge, and we've continued on the town board to control those taxes. But quality of life is really important to me as well. It goes to the land use boards, as mentioned before. They aren't just for one party. We just appointed a member to the planning board who is not our party. As a matter of fact, he voted in the minority on the Anellatech issue, yet we still reappointed him. We're open-minded to people that are intelligent and independent. I, in a term, first term of mine, I had fought against a downzoning on the west side of Pearl River, which I got to stop because it would have overcrowded the, the school district. And thank God, it didn't happen. I've lived in Orange Town 30 years, and I've chosen to stay here. I don't have a town job. I don't have a county job. Matter of fact, my professional career, which is, except for maybe three years, the other 35 have been in private industry, either commuted to New York City or northern or central Jersey. But I chose to stay here because I love Orange Town. My, my accounting skills and my talent, I could take anywhere in the country. I could move and get a job. I chose to stay here, and I want to stay here, and I'm going to dedicate myself to keeping the quality of life as it is, with the smart development, keep it as affordable as possible. And, and, you know, again, what I started to say, somebody that kind of came into this in a series of volunteerism, I'm just kind of, quite honestly, blown away at this many people came to hear us, us talk. But it's nice because I recognize a lot of faces, and you feel at home and with your neighbors. And call me anytime, I'll, I'll try to help you out, and good luck. Thank you all.
Okay. And the last word tonight, the last word goes to Jerry Batari.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. Thanked our town for putting this on. Thanks for all of you for coming out, and thank for those watching at home. My opponents have brought out their backgrounds, okay? They have brought out what they do and how it benefits the town, and have chosen to question how mine benefits the town. They did say it was the largest budget in the town, possibly second. I'm not sure with the sewer department, the highway department catching up, but it is the largest budget. And there are certain things that they do not understand about the police department, and they will never understand about the police department. And that is not criticism in any way. If you talk to police officers, you just have to be one to understand it. Okay? And what I'm telling you is that I understand the police department. I do have another job to do, and I will do that other job. And I think you sell the police department short if you think that you, that they will not understand that I have a separate job to do. Okay? So. I look, thank you. I, I look forward to working with the town board. I look forward to working to keep Orange Town a place that we can all live, our children can live, and our children's children can live. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the candidates for appearing tonight and sharing their views, and we've struck some sparks, certainly, but that's what the nature of an election is. And this free flow of ideas and interchange, I hope, has given you a better idea of these candidates as people. People who, who are seeking to do an important job or to continue to do an important job. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Next up, after a recess, we are going to hear from the supervisor candidates.